Charlie, how do I, Father, can we thank you for the privilege, Lord, that we can be here, Lord, we thank you for our mayor and our manager and our commissioners, Lord, that you protect them at all times, Lord. Now be of this meeting, Lord, and be of the citizens that have been made, Lord, that it be the right decisions. We'll give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ledge of legions?
Ledge of legions, into the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel, absent. Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Markowski.
Here.
Mayor Galvin, absent. Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Okay, I just would like to say that the mayor is not here because he is celebrating his 30th wedding anniversary, so let's keep him in our thoughts and wish them another 30 joyful years, so that's quite a milestone. We have two presentations. Madam Clerk?
Burgess Norton presentation, summer 2013 environmental investigation.
If you could introduce yourself and give yourself, or introduce your name and the address, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Ed Brochius. I am the Secretary of Burgess Norton Manufacturing Company. With me is Jim Enright, our local attorney, and Jim will provide an update on the investigation that's ongoing on the Nims Street property.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Enright, I'm from Grand Rapids. I should also introduce, while I'm here, Heather Hopkins and Chris Myron from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality attending here this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing us. We're here to personally explain to you what our plans are for further environmental investigation this summer. This is part of the company's effort to protect human health and the environment and ensure compliance with law. Let me offer just a couple points of background before I go into what the plans are for the summer. Background is, we've been working to identify groundwater contamination that may have arisen from the property we own at 660 Nims Street. What we've found is groundwater contamination that appears to have come from our property and some that may come from elsewhere. The area we've been working in is from our property, then to the north-northwest toward Ryerson Creek. We've found groundwater contamination located about 30 to 90 feet underground, in a place where people are not directly in contact with it. Because the city supplies municipal water from Lake Michigan, no one should be using the groundwater. This has been confirmed by reviewing water bills and surveying in the area. Even I recall, we notified the city three different times of our findings in 2009, 2010, 2011, and at the same time we notified all of the citizens, property owners who might be impacted by the contamination as well. All the work we've done has been under the oversight of the Michigan DEQ. That's true for the plan for this year as well. This is what we plan to do this summer. Again, the work was set forth in a plan that was approved by the DEQ. What we're going to do is environmental testing in the area of Ryerson Creek. Our work in 2012 indicated that the groundwater contamination might reach its furthest limit in the area of Ryerson Creek, but we need to look into that further. We're also going to do environmental testing to pin down how far out to the sides the area of contamination goes, in addition to its south-to-north-northwest direction. We're going to try to button up a couple more questions. The work we're going to do involves soil sampling and groundwater sampling, as it has in years past. We'll install some monitoring wells in order to better understand the situation. All the testing, again, as in years past, will be on city rights-of-way or city property. It'll be covered by permits issued by the city engineer whenever that's required. So far, we've done some preliminary work, such as onsite review of some of the locations we intend to investigate. The main field work will begin in early July. We've kept the city attorney, the city manager, and the city engineer informed at all times. We appreciate the cooperation the city has shown, which has been extraordinary, and we look forward to continuing that good working relationship. That's the explanation for what we're doing this year in brief. There's one other thing I'd like to cover while I've got a moment. We recently put up a website to inform the public about the situation. It provides the reports we've submitted to the DEQ. It provides question-and-answer format information. It provides additional websites and names and phone numbers of people to contact. The address of that website is www.nimsreport.com. The key word in that is spelled N-I-M-S-R-E-P-O-R-T. Before the meeting, Ed and I were kind of remarking that the website has actually been something that internally we rely on and is actually the fastest place to find the information we want to see. It's faster than trying to dig it out of my hard copy files or find it on my computer. Anyway, we'd like to answer any questions you have. Thanks again for your cooperation. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our presenters? Please, Commissioner.
Thank you, first of all, for bringing this to us and doing it in a public forum. I realize that you're taking this step by step, but do you have more of a long-term plan towards remediation of this contamination?
I can say that in general, we do plan to be around, as we have been for years, working on the investigation. We plan to be around it to carry out whatever remediation turns out to be required. At this point, we don't actually know enough to know specifically what we might be getting into, whether physical remediation will be required, to what extent there might be some controls on land use or groundwater contact, or whatever that form might be. We're just not quite there yet.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Commission? Okay, I have one request from the public, and since this is a presentation and not a public hearing, I will just recognize this individual who filed a request. Anna Elden-Brady, you had a question. Would you please come up and identify yourself, name, address, and your question, please.
My name is Anna Elden-Brady, and I live at 1336 Spring Street. My concern in this is that while no one has currently been drinking out of this site, I live, little circled spot on this map, where there's actually a dot on it for a future well in my backyard, a testing site, and I have an open well permit currently with the county of Muskegon for drilling and a household-use well. I have had this for about a year now, we've been working on it, because this map that the county depended on, and the city verified that through our contacts was accurate, does not have Burgess Norton on it as a contamination site. I have been working on this, my husband and I, for about a year. We cannot drink due to personal health situations, the city water. We have therefore been buying bottled water, and as you might well know, that's pretty bloody expensive, and I'd rather not do that for much longer. And until I saw this form, or this report in the packet, nobody has said anything to me about the fact that this is creeping toward my property. And I'm a little bit concerned, obviously, because not only is my property a well that's in progress, currently at, I think, 25 foot deep and continuing down, we were hoping to go at least 35, but I know that there are irrigation wells in our neighborhood for vegetable-growing that have been drilled down. So with what I've read about this particular chemical, it goes airborne fairly easily, and I'm wondering, has this been spread into our air now, and is it being sprayed on the vegetables that our families are currently eating? And this is just a horrible situation to have to try to figure out, because as of looking at this, now I don't have an option for the well, really, and I don't really have an option for drinking city water, so I'm kind of stuck. And this does not make me very happy, and yeah, I'm rather concerned, and I don't want to have to look at, you know, digging a giant cistern to collect rainwater to purify in order to drink and to bathe in, so there's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you that city staff took your information down. I'm sure we'll be in touch with the county to make sure we're properly coordinating regarding well permits. Could you speak to the notification process? I know as a property owner, the city's been notified and other property owners, so could you kind of speak to that process, how people get notified, and the precautions for those who have been notified, what they should be doing to protect their health?
Right, I mentioned that we'd set notices in 2009, 2010, and 2011, and I'll tell you what that's about. There is actually a state law requirement that persons in our position who might be having to deal with groundwater contamination or other contamination emanating from their properties notify persons that they have reason to believe might be affected. And as we've read that, our interpretation has been that even if we haven't, you know, actually fully identified that particular property is, you know, subject to this situation, but we have reason to believe based on other data we can project that we need to get that kind of notice, and that's what we've been doing. In 2009, based on the data we had then, we notified, I think, 13 property owners, that was before we knew a lot about the extent of the contamination, and each year, as we've learned more, we've actually notified a larger and larger group of people. The last big group was, in fact, group of any, was in 2011 when we sent out those notices. Each year, I should point out that we've been projecting forward from our investigations so that we're not only notifying people at the farthest limit of places where we've drilled wells, but we've gone way beyond that, really as a precaution, so that there are people who receive notices that are way beyond the areas where we've actually done investigation on it. But like I said, if we have reason to believe that we need to provide that notice, that's what we've been doing. With respect to the specific information, or the specific situation was just brought up here, we'd be glad to talk to folks and see what we can do to add to the information or whatever it takes to deal with the situation.
And is there a way to contact through the website that you've already mentioned, the nimsreport.com, so people who have those kind of questions can get them answered directly from you?
Absolutely, that's built into the website, that we'd be happy to answer those types of questions.
Okay.
There are names and phone numbers of the specific contacts, you can also telephone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commission, anything else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate the update. Clerk, we have another presentation, please.
County jail update.
Sheriff Rosler?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and city commissioners, Dean Rosler, County Sheriff, for your records. I have with me a couple of gentlemen from the architectural firm GMB, who we're going to present a quick, oh, progress update on the jail project, kind of give the Commission and folks in the audience here a look at the composite drawings, not really composite, conceptual, that's it, conceptual drawings, as we think we're probably going to go forward with at this point in terms of what the structure will look like, structures, both the jail and the, are we doing juvenile transition center? Okay, quickly. Both facilities as to what conceptually they'll look like, how they'll blend with the existing community, the existing county campus, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't think we go into a lot of the operational plans. If you have specific questions or if you have any questions about the door operations, maybe they can corner me or contact me, you know, personally, I'll be happy to discuss that with them. And we don't have the total cost developed at this point, that's a process that's ongoing, but I think what you'll see is that there's actually been a whole lot of work done in a fairly short period of time. So with that case, I'm, now bear with me, because there's a Larry, a Jerry, and a Terry all working on this project with us. I'm going to have Larry Goldberg and Terry Bland. Jerry's not here. Thank you.
While he's setting that up, I'll get started, because Terry told me I only have 15 minutes, and I don't think, I don't think I've ever talked about a jail in 15 minutes, but I'll try, we've actually got two. Sure. We've been working on this about five weeks, and I want to tell you for the record, Heath Kaplan and Bonnie Hammersby, the sheriff, their respective staffs have been wonderful and cooperative to work with, and it's through their direction we've made the progress we have. Basically, when you may have seen this last, the two projects were somewhat different during the master plan process. When we were retained and analyzed the projects, we saw an opportunity to re-conceptualize it a little bit. Move the adult jail, you have two projects, one is the adult detention center, and the other is the juvenile detention or the juvenile transition center. Talking about the adult first, we have proposed moving it back across the street, onto the courthouse property itself, attaching it to the existing jail, which, as you know, forms an L with the Hall of Justice, right? I'm going to tell you in a snapshot that the existing jail, as a linear piece of architecture, is outdated and dysfunctional as a jail. As an administration space, it's excellent, and we're going to harness it for that use and save some money. The jail itself will be attached to it, you've got some elevators that allow the different floor-to-floor heights to be reconciled, and the project will stand partially on columns, so the parking there in front of the Hall of Justice will be adversely affected to the least degree that we can. Right now, that stands at about 50 spaces we'll lose. But what we'll gain is a tremendous amount of efficiency. We also expect to lose the 500 or 600-foot tunnel that would have connected these buildings and created, in our opinion, a pretty expensive and staff inefficient operational consequence. So with all this cleaned up, what you have in front of you is a diagram, it's not all the floors. The floors are, there's a basement, partial basement, partial ground floor, and two floors of housing, forming a simple rectangle. The population is envisioned at 474 beds, and can you all hear me if I step away from the mic?
We can, but they can't hear you on TV, so you might want to repeat your comments for the audience after you've shown up.
This is what we call a fourth-generation radiopodular design, and what it means is the jail housing is divided like pie wedges around a central hub. That hub is a housing control in which an officer, he or she can electronically control, thank you, electronically control the activities, supervise the activities of the prisoners, and they can be safely classified into a series of smaller discreet housing groups. By doing it this way, we can accommodate the classification for the whole huge spectrum of prisoners that the sheriff and sheriffs like him have to deal with every day or every night in modern jails in America. Our task includes a base of about 474 beds in general population, but the gray shaded areas you see at the bottom are shelled pods that will allow the population to be increased, excuse me, incrementally, another 56 beds, to bring it up to the original 544 beds that was our target, Nichols permitting. All right. We also will structure the building for a fourth floor, which can be done now as a shell or done in the future, but the elevator shaft, utilities, everything will be brought up so that it, that can be done. If that were to happen someday down the road for another 216 beds, 216 beds per floor, which is awfully efficient, then it would bring the capacity in general population up to about 746 beds, which we hope the county will never need. But good planning means to allow both incremental and wholesale expansion in the years or decades to come. All right.
Can I see what it looks like on the side?
Yes, that was my next. Here is the preliminary massing diagram to show what it would look like.
Here's the current jail, obviously, the courthouse behind, and then the jail. Maybe they didn't do that, Larry, so those are the steps again. Current jail, courthouse, I'll sorry.
Okay. What you have is you've got the Hall of Justice behind it, and then to the side, the long skinny piece forming an L, is the existing jail, basement and three floors, and with stairs, everything, it's just perfect for administrative use, so we're going to gut that structure and reconfigure it for administrative uses in whole or in part, we're still working on that. And then the big rectangle in front, or the big mass in front, is the proposed jail, with parking underneath partially. Incidentally, that would be secured parking for designated purposes, so that somebody couldn't just drive willy-nilly underneath the jail for sabotage purposes. We have three elevators planned with a shaft for a fourth. The one at the top, the elevator at the tops, two-door, because it has to reconcile different floor-to-floor heights. I don't know how you build these buildings together, and the floors don't line up or even close, and, but in any event, that's not uncommon, and that's how we're dealing with it. All right. The design that you, the design you see represents about 217 gross square feet per bed, which is, which is awfully efficient, and what it means is we're able to get this within about 103,000 square feet, whereas the master plan envisioned originally, at least in some of its permutations, about 141,000 square feet. So we're saving some money there, and we hope to the, to the good, all right? The design itself is a three-post design, meaning in terms of the glass bubble in which a jail officer, stationary jail officer, controls through line-of-side cameras and electronics all the functions of prisoners. He or she, of course, will have mobile officers doing a number of things too, but that's awfully efficient. All right. I want to then switch quickly to the, to the youth transition center, and Terry's putting that up. I don't think I have that in front of me. That's all right. A juvenile facility, as you can imagine today, challenges the designer and the operator to a degree never envisioned. Not to be overly simplistic, at one end of the spectrum, you've got a jail you put kids in, with steel cells and stainless steel commodes and all that kind of stuff, all right? At the other end of the spectrum, you have the philosophy that these are still youth, and they deserve something more constructive, more compassionate, and more flexible than a jail environment, detention environment. This was our direction for Muskegon, and we couldn't have agreed more. So what you see is something that's an evolution of juvenile facilities we have designed, which is a series of small pods with residential units, with actual bathrooms. Now, make no mistake, underneath the skin is a detention strength environment. It is concrete block, it is grouted around eight-inch or 16-inch on center rebar, it has all the muscle to stand up to abuse in the years to come, it's just not going to look like it. And it is in an L shape, so it can be expanded with the second or third pod. The original program was 32 beds, we have 32 beds, and two equal pods of 16, and as you can imagine, with a mandated operational ratio of 1 to 8, you can see why we've got four times 1 to 8. All right. It also meets or exceeds Michigan standards for youth facilities of this type in this way, that the one-bedroom units that you see have the square footage necessary for two beds. The two-bedroom units that you see have the square footage necessary for three beds, so that they could in fact play some games with classification and population if they needed to without changing a single wall. But if not, the thing, the facility can ultimately accommodate 64 beds, all right? It has a cook-chill kitchen, it will use food service from the main jail that we're designing in parallel, all right? Okay.
Let's go to the massing on the transition center.
What we wanted to do was create a massing that was much more low-key and much more residential in scale than a jail or institutional building such as the adult facility. Obviously, it's a much smaller building. Incidentally, the original earlier design, city officials may have seen, encompassed about 41,000 square feet of space. What you're seeing here is about 25, slightly less than 26,000 square feet, so we saved about 15,000 square feet there, and all the spaces are ample. But you can see from the massing, what we've done is gone for a more residential look with hip roofs. The higher roofs at the end are indoor-outdoor activity spaces. They're sized for a half-court and basketball and a higher ceiling, but they're slid into the mass of it. You have big louvers high up, but the idea is that the residents can still have access to exercise when the weather is inclement. The other idea is that you don't have to see anybody in the building regardless of their location within the building, and it's a good neighbor from that standpoint. Incidentally, the adult facility has the same thing, indoor-outdoor activities with big louvers high up on the wall that are operable for fresh air, and the idea is you don't have a bunch of guys in orange jumpsuits behind fences yelling at passer-bys. And so, that having been said, we're very pleased with our progress. This won't be the last time we come in front of you. We appreciate the opportunity, and I'll take any questions if there are some.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Markowski?
Well, you did answer one of mine regarding outdoor space, so I'm glad that that was accounted for. What's the percentage of treatment space to housing within both of these facilities?
It's all treatment space in this case, but what we call hardened treatment space. One of the things we wanted to do was give, give the staff as much flexibility as we could, so we didn't, for instance, we tossed, that one 16-bed wing would be detention, the other 16-bed wing would be treatment, you know, and all of that, and the problem is one becomes the other. You can have a good kid acting out, you can have a, you know, a passive kid becomes violent. The spectrum of behavior is so vast that we decided that we really wanted to make the whole thing hardened treatment, so it withstand abuse, but they could use any of these residential units for any part of the spectrum of care.
Is the juvenile center entirely locked down?
What's that?
Is the entire juvenile center locked down?
Yes.
Those are mine.
But it'll be half, have slim, jam-mounted, slim-line detention locks, not the big square locks you see in, in adult jails. We just didn't want that look.
Other questions?
You said it'd be a total of 32 beds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be also co-ed, also with female and male?
Correct.
Okay. Now, are there any, will there be a treatment facility in there due to, you know, certain kids, youth needing some type of treatment for whatever reasons? Because working at a detention center in the past, I noticed that a lot of students, kids was housed in these facilities and dealt with, you know, various issues, but there wasn't an actual treatment facility in place or treatment plan where these kids could actually receive the treatment that they need.
Yes. Just to detail a few, vocational, educational, we have the space in there for court with our hearings. We have space in there for meetings with counselors, obviously with judges, with family members, with advocates. We also have in there, as you studied the plan, a whole section for family services. In other words, where families can come in, because obviously, they have to be active participants in the treatment program. And we have rooms where they can go in, be with their child, cook dinner, exercise, obviously a degree of normalization. And it's all secure, so no one's running out the door. We've got medical unit. I mean, it's a pretty broad spectrum of care, but I will tell you, it's still preliminary enough that we're just starting to put in place operational assessments in order to develop updated protocols for its operation.
Okay. Okay, one other question also. I didn't see on your diagram, the, I guess, the central location where the control center would be. Where would that be?
Well, you've got central control, but if you look on your plans, you'll see an atrium. And that atrium's an open classroom, so everything doesn't have to occur within walls. But stationary control will occur not in a glass box there, but behind counter, not dissimilar to the one you're seated behind right now. Right? But in the atriums in the wings, you'll have staff that will control the operation of their environment with tablets. Right here. Atrium, right here, right here, and that will go up to skylights up above. So, it should be a neat interior, and it's not expensive. The day has come where the jail staff, too, where you will have a tablet, and it'll have everything, including camera. It'll have your door operations, your intercom, everything. It's just, it's amazing. You know that day had to come, and it's here. They're not tied to concrete and a computer on a desk anymore.
Thank you. Different, hold on. No, I just wanted to say a different environment, you know, opposed to what I worked in, so I could see that's state of our technology, so it looks good.
Thank you.
I'll come back to you, Commissioner, but before I do, Commissioner Turnquist, Commissioner Hood, do you have questions?
I also have to tell you that our team has had the opportunity to meet with some of your building officials already, and to start assessing codes and utilities and setbacks and so forth. That's been, that's been great. We look forward to a high level of cooperation. And on the adult jail, the vehicular Sallyport, we may start getting pretty near the curb, because we're trying to bump it out so we can raise the ceiling, so we can get buses in there if we need to for Department of Corrections and so forth. But I'm not sure anything else poses much of a setback problem, but you can see the effort for context here. Thank you so much.
There was Commissioner Markowski, I think, had a follow-up question.
You were mentioning that you're starting to discuss utilities and things of that nature, so that is more similar to my next question, which is, do you have at this point plans for obtaining any type of LEED or other energy certification, and do you have any plans for renewable energy?
It is going to be, it will be designed to 85% LEED certification, and that's a typical under the architectural standards today. The other 15% is always the option, that whomever you are designing for makes that decision to move that other 15%. Typically, in a project of this type, you're not going to go for a certified, a gold or a LEED or silver certification, but we will work towards sustainability, and the construction manager that the county has hired has agreed to do that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hood, you had a question?
Yes. I missed it during your presentation. Where exactly will the juvenile detention center be?
It's in the south campus of the county, on the backside of the old Baker College.
Yeah, I had the same question. What was the nearest street there? Because it was a little hard to tell from that way out.
Pine and Delaware. Pine and Delaware.
Okay, all right.
And the front is Elche, and it faces the outward corner.
Okay. I just wasn't sure. That was the question I was going to ask as well, so.
Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to say, I know there's been a few points of concern, and I'm glad that reasonable discussion could clear those up, and this project's moving forward. Anybody who's been in the jail knows, regardless of what you think about the size of the jail, it needs to be replaced. It's unacceptable for the people who have to work there. It's unacceptable for the people who have to spend time there for whatever reason. And so, I'm excited to see that this project's moving forward, and that we've ironed out the issues that we were dealing with earlier, and I wish you well, and that this project is successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the consent agenda read, please.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the May 28 City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Request to waive water connection fee for Alcoa Square Splash Pad, City Manager, summary request. To waive the water connection fee for the Alcoa Square Splash Pad. This facility serves the youth of our community, and as such, this request fits well with the City Commission's goals to serve our youth. Staff recommendation, to approve the request. Memorandum of Understanding, Justice Assistance Grant, Public Safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the Commission authorize the Director and the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Muskegon Heights and Muskegon County in regards to the dispersment of the fiscal year 2013 Justice Assistance Grant. It is further requested that the mayor be authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding. Although the Bureau of Justice Assistance has designated the city as being in a disparate funding situation because the county provides more than 50% of the jail facilities, our proposal is to keep the allocations exactly as they initially came down from the BJA, which is as follows. County of Muskegon, zero. City of Muskegon, $27,549. And City of Muskegon Heights, $16,346. Note that the BJA uses crime data versus population in making these allocation decisions. The City of Muskegon portion is planned to be used in continuation of the manner in which the previous year's JAG funding was used, which is for the prosecution of city ordinance cases dealing primarily with neighborhood issues. A prosecutor was hired specifically for this under a previous fiscal year JAG grant. Staff recommendation, approval of this request. Fireworks display permit for Muskegon Country Club, City Clerk, summary request. Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4, 2013, at the Muskegon County Art Country Club, 2801 Lake Shore Drive. Fire Marshal Metcalf will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. Fireworks display permit for Coast West Music Festival, City Clerk, summary request. Night Magic is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4 at the Coast West Music Festival. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. Staff recommendation, approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. Cemetery Mowers, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase two John Deere Z915B lawn mowers from the power shop, the lowest qualified bidder. These machines will be replaced with 2005 and 2007 Grasshopper models currently being used. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase two John Deere lawn mowers from the power shop. Engineering Services Asset Management, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to enter into an engineering services agreement with Prine and Newhoff to provide asset management for storm and sanitary sewer evaluation, and to prepare and submit a grant application seeking state funds to cover the cost of any identified project of up to $2 million. Staff recommendation, authorize to enter into an engineering services agreement with PNN. Consideration of quotes for electrical work at DPW, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to enter into an agreement with J&amp;J Electrical Service out of Muskegon to provide all material and labor necessary to extend an electrical service to the newly purchased patchy machine for $11,800. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with J&amp;J.
Commissioner, you've heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you wish to remove for discussion? Seeing none, may we have a motion, please?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner Markowski that we accept the consent agenda as read. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We now have a public hearing.
2013-2014 Budget, Finance Department, summary request. This is the time set for public hearing on the two, on the city's 2013-2014 budget. After the public hearing, the City Commission may take action to adopt the 2013-2014 budget with any changes or adjustments deemed necessary. City ordinance requires the budget be adopted by the second regular City Commission meeting in June. The property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. Staff recommendation, receive public comments. Upon closing the public hearing, the City Commission may decide to adopt the budget.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you wish to address the budget, please come up to the podium. Please give your name and address and your comments, please.
What was the sheet over there? So, I just filled out my.
Are you interested in discussing the budget?
I am.
Okay. Please identify yourself and address, and proceed.
My name is Robert Jennings. I live at 3553 Marina View Point, and I'm not going to bring up the usual matter. I have a concern about the public safety being what I'm going to think is inadequate for this next budget. Our police officers did a very commendable job on the last day of the high school. There are a great many officers in the area, and I think that their presence there definitely made a difference in terms of an orderly dismissal. Unfortunately, one child was shot, but that was some distance from the school. But I'm hoping that someone on the commission, either the mayor or the city manager, commended those officers for a very great job on that last day of school. Okay. And looking at the budget, I'm concerned, again, about the fact that I don't think that we have enough uniformed officers out there in terms of the rising crime rates. I have some statistic here that I would bring up to illustrate and support my contention. I'm going to take the Nelson Neighborhood only for the first four months of the year. Of course, that's January, February, March, and April, and only four months because we have not had a compilation for May of this year in terms of comparison. In 2011, the Nelson Neighborhood had 95 serious incidents that require attention from our police department. For the year's total, it was 979. The next year, 2012, there were 86, actually a decrease in the first four months of about 8%. However, the total at the end of the year was 1,061 serious incidents. So far this year, in the Nelson Neighborhood, there have been an increase, drastic increase. 86 in 2012, 213 in the first four months of this year. That's 127 individual incidents in terms of an increase, or 147%.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In view of the fact that we are a different city than we were a couple of decades ago, I feel that that part of the budget needs some revision so that we can hire more police officers and have them on the streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to address the budget? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
That's a motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by Commissioner German to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have the option of entertaining a motion to adopt the budget tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the budget? Commissioner Turnquist?
I'd like to make a motion, if I may just say, we've spent a lot of time prior to coming to the meeting. We spent two, two and a half hours. There were a lot of questions that were asked, and we feel as a commission that the city staff, city manager have really worked and done a good job at presenting this budget. So, I would move that we accept the budget as presented.
So, you're second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner German to adopt the 2013-2014 budget as presented. Any discussion?
Just me. I always have something to say.
Commissioner Markowski?
I don't necessarily have a specific item to discuss at the moment, but I do think that as we have the option to approve this at our next meeting, we might consider doing that, as we do have members absent, and also because we simply went over this last evening, and I'm not sure that we've had adequate time to review that. I may feel otherwise. But I would prefer to address this at our next meeting unless it causes duress on staff.
Well, that certainly will be reflected in the vote, I guess, unless there's a motion to table. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would like to add that the concern that was raised this evening on public safety, it's a concern of all of ours, and at this time, the quota is not completely full. We have three or four openings that we are in the process of adding more uniformed officers to our force. We all are sympathetic to that, having more, but I think that the presentation and the numbers are good. They could be better, but they're good.
Commissioner German?
I'd like to kind of piggyback off what Commissioner Turnquist is talking about also, and I have the same feelings and thoughts that you have about neighborhoods and the crime, which has definitely escalated. And I've talked with the chief of police, and the police department is doing, you know, above and beyond of what they could do right now, and they have operations in place as we speak. So, I feel confident that, you know, they will be out there patrolling, you know, these areas, you know, as it warms up, and hopefully, you know, things are just kind of quiet down this summer and have more of a safer, you know, neighborhood with less crime, so. And we also have to work together as a community, because all of us are stakeholders, and, you know, getting the community involved, you know, the leaders and, you know, the citizens. So, you know, if we see something out there, we need to address that and be, you know, watchers in our communities, because we all live in the same community in Muskegon County, so let's work together.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood?
I'd just like to say that I commend the police department also for the last day of school, but I also like to commend our students also, because if you give them an antipathy, if they wanted to do, start trouble, they would have, but they decide to go home. And of course, it had a lot to do with police presence, but it had a lot to do with their demeanor also. So, it's all the same.
Thank you. Before we take the roll call vote on this, I just want to compliment the manager and the staff who have once again put together a functional budget with very limited resources. I look around the state, and I see our peers, and we're starting to get recognition around the state and around the country for the fine financial work that City of Muskegon staff have done. We're in a position where we can talk about adding three officers instead of cutting three officers because of the tough choices that we've had to make in the past, all of which were very hard decisions for us to make, whether it was changing a pension plan or eliminating a program that was worthwhile but not a core function. And we're able to be financially solid, and we're able to move forward with confidence into an uncertain future, because we, as we saw last night with B.C. Cobb and other issues, we're not out of the woods yet. But we're in good shape to face that future because of the work of you and your predecessors and our city staff, and I want to thank them for their hard work. Commissioner Markowski?
I don't have a problem with approving the budget this evening. I did just want to make sure that people were well aware that we revised- I did just want to make sure that people were well aware that we revise our budget throughout the year when things change, and that we are always open to new ideas and ways to save money or provide better services. So I just want to make sure that people know that we accept those ideas all year long, not during just this budget deliberation. And we really need to all be mindful of ways that we can do things better and more efficiently.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good job, well done. New business, item A.
Proposed 2013-2014 CDBG Home Grants, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the 2013-2014 CDBG Home Grant Budget based on the spreadsheet for submission of the 2013-2014 Action Plan to HUD. Staff recommendation: To approve the above request.
We have a motion to approve the request so that we may begin discussion. Commissioner Hood?
I move to approve the 2013-2014 CDBG Home Grant Budget based on the spreadsheet for submission of the 2013-2014 Action Plan to HUD.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by Commissioner German to accept the 2013-2014 CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant and Home Grants Budget based on the spreadsheet submission for the 2013-2014 Action Plan to HUD. Commissioner German?
Okay. With the CBG grant, this is the grant that allows services for the community citizens to receive vinyl sightings and stuff like on their homes. And I had a lot of citizens approach me about this, and so the information that was given was very helpful to them and helped, you know, to maintain their property. Now, I don't, I found out that they don't service windows, which is part of this, you know, which is not part of this grant. Is there something that we could, some type of funding that we can direct towards some type of windows where citizens could receive placement, you know, replacing their windows in their homes?
I think O'Nita Bailey can address that.
Sure. Thank you.
Not a problem. Our program is really based on what we make it, so each community has decided to do certain things and some things we don't. And we haven't provided windows up to this date. Not that we can't, we just have not done that.
Okay. And that's something that I would actually want to recommend because with the heating costs, that helps cut down on the heating costs when it comes to the weatherization and a lot of senior citizens that do receive this service, they can't, you know, really afford those high-cost heating bills. So I think that's something that we should look into in the future, or possibly, you know, make a plan strategically to have funds allocated towards something like that.
O'Nita, would you mind talking just real briefly about some of the things that we do, though?
Absolutely.
Because Commissioner German's talking about vinyl sighting program, but we also have the emergency home repairs, which cover other things as well. Absolutely. We have a priority housing program that allows for roofs to be replaced, furnaces in the wintertime. We've gone as far as electrical, rewiring a home that was dangerous. And any code violations, whether it's plumbing or... We do pretty much every home repair if there's a health or safety issue. And I think that's where we were looking at windows as not necessarily a health and safety issue. And if there were broken windows, we did refer them to other agencies that did provide that service.
Are you...
Yeah, I'm fine.
Commissar Markowski?
Thank you.
You also mentioned that this was in regards to heat bills, and there are a lot of weatherization options available in the county, and certainly our departments make sure that people are forwarded to those. And also, are windows included in our lead grant programs?
The lead grant did cover windows, but it ended in 2009. So the county currently has a lead grant, and they do replace windows. And we do work as a partner with the county to provide that service to our citizens.
So we're just referring them to the county, but that lead program does include the replacement of windows with sills that are...
It does, because normally there's lead in the windows and doors and...
Any other questions? Any other comments or discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, O'Nita. Item D.
Fiscal Year 2013 Port Security Grant Program Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety requests that the commission authorize entering into an agreement with the county of Muskegon to be part of their larger submission under the Fiscal Year 2013 Port Security Grant Program Grant Application. Our portion of the submission would be to purchase outdated, sixty outdated, to replace sixty outdated portable radios. The new equipment will allow the city to access the TAC frequencies for communication with other agencies. Communications between the agencies is critical in the event of an emergency situation. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval of this request.
You have heard the report. Is there a motion? Commissioner Hood?
Motion to approve the request for the radios.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by Commissioner Markowski to approve the Fiscal Year 2013 Port Security Grant Program request for the sixty portable radios. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Spataro? May I ask a question? Maybe it's not...
Sure.
And I thought it might have been covered under unfinished business, but at our last meeting, the mayor appointed himself and Commissioner Hood and the city manager and city staff to do some discussion on the bike time farmer's market. I wonder if they, if this is not the time.
I would suggest we might perhaps have discussion under any other business. I don't believe there's a recommendation that requires commission action at this time, but we can come back to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Harris Hospitality regarding previous action from this commission regarding the restaurant on the beach, I guess we should call it. Gentlemen, if you could, again, introduce yourself, address, and you have the floor.
Fred Sharma, 1058 Fordham Court.
Thank you.
I'd first like to thank the commission for your time this evening. I would also like to just take a quick minute to apologize, as I understand you all have a very busy schedule, and it wasn't required that we come back this evening unless we went outside of our original footprint that we discussed last time at the commission meeting. With that said, I would like to say our group is beyond excited for our proposed development, much so than before. It's really been a contagious situation when speaking with the citizens of Muskegon and realizing the great level of support they have behind us on this project. We are here tonight seeking an answer as to whether or not we can move forward with this development. Approximately one month ago, I was before you pitching a proposal that had five phases. We still are sticking true to that original proposal. We are just seeking an increased footprint as through hours of brainstorming, that is, with city officials, neighborhood associations, citizens, and our group, we feel it is the best site plan that will lead to great success with respecting our surroundings in the coming future. We have worked hard and achieved a great deal since our last commission meeting. We met with several citizens and neighborhood associations, and Grant gained a great level of support. We spent hours with Hooker to Young, citizens, city officials, brainstorming ideas, many of which you'll see before you today. We secured a liquor license from the old CJ's property, and we've been negotiating a lease and feel our attorneys are in a positive direction. We secured financing for our increased level of investment. With all this stated, we have one hurdle to overcome. We need some sort of direction in the answer as to the ability to get a larger footprint. Harris Hospitality asks of you tonight that you consider how sensitive our timeframe is in being able to move forward with this project. We are, as of true Muskegonites, love to keep this project a hundred percent local. That said, we've yet to find a builder who will commit to a timeframe faster than ten months for a project of this magnitude. We must consider it's not only the size, but the location of this project, as well as the ability to work through the harsh winter months ahead of us. We feel to push forward with this development, we must shoot to be open by the May 1st of 2014. This puts our group in a serious bind as far as the timeframe goes. I would like to say we have several citizens of Muskegon here that are willing to support the development. And I feel at this time, if anyone has any questions, I'm certainly ready to answer that or walk you through our change in site plans.
Well, I think it would serve everybody well if you would walk us through the changes in your site plans. Then we'll open it up for questions from the commission. And while this is not a public hearing, there are a couple of requests here that will be recognized first, and then I will entertain comments from the audience as long as we respect one comment from each person. Because I think of an issue of this magnitude, it's worth a little extra time to make sure everybody has an opportunity to comment on this.
Appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Okay, since we came last with our proposal, as far as the initial plan for the restaurant that has not changed, what you're looking at here is, for the most part, almost an exact layout of the existing CJ's property. Here, you'll see that in red. You'll see over here is the proposed banquet facility, which is approximately ten thousand square feet. The restaurant is four thousand square feet. The initial yogurt stand that we had in our proposal is here, which is approximately a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. We also have our beach rental supplies, which is approximately eight hundred to a thousand square feet. What we've done, we're working with citizens, we had some commissioners that came to our brainstorming meetings, we essentially stuck with the same plan that we presented before. That said, it was unanimous decision with everyone to combine all those phases into one building, took away from the view of the beach, took away from, in general, it was really going to look like a strip mall, and very difficult to change that. What we did is we decided to go with multi-b buildings, and within those buildings, you'll see landscaped areas, everything from a splash pad for children, an amphitheater, we have several guests, ran fireplaces, we have a wishing well for kids, families, portable cabanas, we've incorporated volleyball courts. And as a generality, this footprint that we're looking for is predominantly...
Before you move that, could you show where the existing building is in relation to what's on there?
Correct, right. It's actually almost identical to that.
So the proposed new building is basically on the same footprint as the old?
Correct. If you look here in gray, these are exact coordinates.
Okay.
That would reflect that, and it's almost the exact footprint for the restaurant.
Thank you. So as we're moving forward, I just want to make sure it's organized correctly. Thank you.
And if you look, here we have a layout of the approximate square footage, and as you'll see highlighted in the yellow areas of that large footprint, that's what will be available for public use. We plan on keep, for public access, we plan on having the entire properties open for public access, with the exception of obviously the banquet center, under the understanding there's a wedding or an event that's private, obviously that would be closed to the public. However, all the landscaped areas, the amphitheater, the fireplaces, the boardwalk system, portable cabanas, splash pad, we intend to make this, what we feel as after hours and hours of brainstorming, there needs to be a lot more than a restaurant there. We need to attract people in and have them have activities to stay on this beach and use our facilities.
Is there more? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Markowski?
Regarding the splash pad and public access, you mentioned if there is a wedding. Would you close off those spaces if there was a wedding?
No, all the spaces would be open. That is why we, at this time, have designed the banquet center to be all the way at the opposite end of the... It would maintain open at all times.
Okay. And would you have hours of operation of those spaces different than that of the restaurant?
We haven't discussed that at this time. I would assume that would be something we'd work with the city on, as far as in the past parks that you've had similar landscaping, what seems to be an appropriate timeframe.
Other questions?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. The banquet center, that is attached to the restaurant, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And you said you contacted neighborhood associations?
Yes, we have.
Any in particular?
We worked with Bluffton. Bonnie Witt is actually here this evening and is willing to talk on her behalf.
Okay. Any of the other neighborhood associations?
We've worked with...
Beach Street. People that were on Beach Street.
We talked to the neighborhood in general in Beach Street area, Harbertown as well. We talked to the Silverside Naval Museum. Several businesses on Lake Shore Drive.
Reason I ask is because, you know, I like the inclusiveness of all the citizens, you know, and, you know, when I talk about stakeholders, you know, I want to make sure that we don't exclude anyone. So when you do a project like this, you know, you want to get input from everyone because this is a beach, you know, for the whole city of Muskegon. So I would recommend that, you know, you continue to reach out.
Certainly, and I most definitely agree, and really a lot of what you're looking at today is a result of that. We opened it up to them, and we, I mean, we had every idea that was, you can imagine, on the table, and a lot of the ideas that you're looking at are part of those neighborhood associations saying, this will not work, this might not work, this is a better avenue to go. They're very helpful in foresight as to what hasn't been accepted in the past.
Commissioner Hood? I had his hand up, and then Commissioner Turquest?
How many volleyball courts will be left there?
There's two in our current plan, however, at this time, we're actually working with other groups that are more knowledgeable than we are with volleyball, on a different layout possibly to add more courts or bring them closer together.
Additional questions, Commissioner Hood?
No. That's one because... It's kind of putting things in perspective, the width of the whole plan, you're going to the north, how many more, or can you tell that is the same thing with going south? Is it two and a half times the current footprint, or...
It's about two, that is a very close association. It's about two and a half times, correct?
Okay. Well, did you have any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Markowski?
What is the current discussion as far as responsibility for different portions of this property, especially in regards to things like insurance, as far as whether there's been incident on the splash pad from someone who's visiting the beach? Have those discussions ensued as far as responsibility and over what portions?
At this time, we've had just very brief conversation as far as responsibility. We've offered at this time to take responsibility of everything within that footprint, if that's what's going to be required with the city. I know, working with city manager, it's kind of a situation now that's in the hands of the lawyers, and they're kind of going back and forth as what's in the best interest of the city, the citizens and us when it comes to that particular point. We are prepared, in the event that that's necessary, to manage the entire property. That is our intent.
And we're sort of looking at a management of that property as opposed to a, we're not looking for a purchase of that property, but a lease of a certain amount of space?
Correct.
I haven't really gotten those details.
Yeah, it's a land lease for a certain square footage, and what we're trying to do is obviously increase that square footage. So everything that you would see on there is financed and purchased through Harris Hospitality, however, the land itself is a lease situation with the city, correct?
Thank you.
Perhaps the manager or the city attorney could address the actual route, because this is public park that's covered under the Charter of Park Provision of our city charter. Could you kind of address how this would work as far as the land ownership and the building ownership, or how it could work, I guess?
Well, maybe we'll try. You're right, Vice Mayor, the property is owned by the city and it's not going to be sold. If you enter into any kind of transaction with Harris Hospitality, it would be likely through a... through a lease of the property and some kind of development agreement for the development of the property. Those details haven't been worked out yet, obviously. And I think what hinges on going forward is why they're here today is to get some sense from the city commission that you like what you see and you want to proceed. Obviously, the details have to come back to you and, in the form of perhaps a development agreement and a lease agreement. But what I understand from the Harrises is that they want some sense from the city commission that you like the plans before they continue to spend money on this project.
Correct. At this time, we've invested quite a bit of, you know, time and finance behind this, as well as, you know, working with the citizens and commissioners and architects. And, you know, we're very excited about the project. We've got a liquor license, we're ready to go. But at this point, the lawyers have kind of agreed to, without some sort of legal description of land or the ability to obtain that legal description of land, we're kind of, all of us, the city, as well as Harris Hospitality, spending money on, on not even knowing if we're allowed to have this, you know, this legal description of a larger footprint.
Right. Well, I, I just would like to say, and there's a couple of questions here, and then, like I said, some audience questions. One, I, I do think this is a much better plan than what was originally relayed conceptually. I, I think it works better for the beach and this community. I like the fact that you're basing your business plan on this being a seasonal business. I, I, I'm always reading and hearing from people who want to compare us to places in Florida. And if we had 12 months of 80-degree weather, you could compare us to places in Florida. But realistic business plans are based on a four, maybe five-month window where you're going to make income.
Correct.
And either you have the mothball for the rest of the year, or you have to have made enough money to carry yourself through those lean months. Having a nearby restaurant that's subject to some of the same issues, I, I'm pleased that you were stepping forward on this because you have some direct experience and have shown that you can successfully operate in that kind of environment. Part of my concern is the loss of, of most of the volleyball courts. Now, you know, basically, the, we, I don't intend any disrespect for the person they memorialize here, but they're fairly easily moved. But they do need to be retained in some way. Not necessarily at the current location. And I think that needs to be negotiated out if it's approved by the commission to expand the footprint. They are heavily used, and I do think that we need to acknowledge that and retain that recreational item on the beach for the people who are currently using it. Did you have anything on that? Okay.
We, we have actually contacted the family of, of the late Mr. Davis. They're here tonight to support the project. And they have agreed with, as long as they have the ability to help us design and relay out their volleyball courts with the city's permission for us to get this bigger footprint and move forward, they'll certainly support it.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Turnquist?
Question for the city manager. Legally, we have the ability, as the city commission, to increase the size of the footprint. We don't have to go somewhere else to get some approvals.
I don't give you legal advice, Commissioner.
Pardon me?
I don't give you legal advice, Commissioner.
But I can.
I would defer to the city attorney.
That's correct, Commissioner. It's within the city commission's purview to decide what space on Pier Marquette Beach you wish to lease.
So it takes an action by us?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Well, I have a request here from, and it, it's somewhat doing with, having to do with the beach, so I'll call him up now, Mr. Lou Radkey.
Should I give both your names?
Yeah. If you could come up, please.
I'm going to represent...
Okay.
Eugene Benkert, 4687 Marshall Road. I'm representing Lou Radkey in the red shirt over there. 1230 McLaughlin Avenue is her residence. And she would like the commission to consider adding additional handicap-accessible restrooms to the ovals area. Sounds like there's only one, and it's used by multiple people down there. And she spends a lot of time down there, and she would appreciate if you consider adding some more handicap-accessible restrooms.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Jennings?
Robert Jennings, 3553 Marina View Point. I want to go on record as being very supportive of this development. I'm pro-business and I'm pro-Muskegon, and I think that we certainly need something down on that beach. And we need more development in our city, more reason for people to come here and enjoy themselves. I am very close to this organization, this company, because I live right next door to Dockers. In fact, my wife and I were married at Dockers. So, I have a, a good working relationship and knowledge of the good neighbors that they represent. They're really top-notch, okay? I do have a question regards to traffic flow and parking. Now, if you go to the ovals on a nice, warm summer day, parking is at a premium. The park is filled, next to the channel, people are parked completely around the circle, and, and people drive around and around looking for a place, along with the interior parking area that is also filled. So my question then, have you given thought to this, the traffic patterns, the parking that will be needed to ensure that the, we don't have a massive traffic jam and some unsafe conditions develop in terms of people crossing the street and tempers perhaps being aroused because they can't find a parking place after driving around numerous times? So I would appreciate some input for that. Thank you.
Thank you. While this is not a public hearing, I know there's a lot of interest on this topic. So at this time, if anybody would like to have a comment on this topic, or if they would like to have a question, now's the time to, just please give your name and address and your remarks, please.
Hello, Bonnie Witt, 2261 Surfwood Drive, president of the Beachwood Bluffton Neighborhood Association. I can't tell you how thrilled probably 98% of us are in our neighborhood association to welcome Harris Hospitality to our beach. And hopefully, you consider that as well. One of the main goals of the BBNA, which is our neighborhood association, is to draw people from the entire city, the county, and the state to our neighborhood. We take great pride in having our beaches filled with people from all over the place. We do a lot of work for Dog Beach. And those of you who are dog lovers understand that we support it 100%. We keep all the bag holders filled. We have a member of the AKC here, and the AKC has provided us with all of those bags, and we keep that filled just to get people to our beach. So something like this at Pier Marquette just thrills us to no end, especially since it's so well-planned by people with such an awesome reputation as the Harris Hospitality. So I really hope you consider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Hi, Dave McGaw, 1516 Nelson. My wife and I are just thrilled that this is about to happen, hopefully will happen. And we've talked to several of the neighbors. All of the neighbors are very supportive. This is something we've wanted for a long time. We've been in the area, Pier Marquette area, for 11 years, and we've been just waiting for something to develop like this. And to have the Harris Hospitality Group take it on is just wonderful. If you've ever been to Pints and Courts, or Dockers, or Verdoni's, I mean, they are very classy. All the places are wonderful. These are bright people. Failure is not an option for these people. This will be a successful endeavor, so I certainly hope you approve it.
Thank you.
Hi, Kirsten Falsky, 1668 Beach Street. And we too, my husband and I, are very excited about this possibility that something will be happening down there on Beach Street. I have a couple of questions. Just with the expansion of the footprint, the DEQ does not have to get involved with that at all? And, and that's just a question because as a, as a beachfront owner, if we expand on our home, the DEQ would have to become involved. And that's just something that I want to make sure is covered in advance before they go ahead with their plans and then run into a roadblock. So just something that I'm thinking of right now, and I'm sure it's probably already been brought up and considered. The other thing that I was just thinking about was you currently have a rental, in the bathhouse, there is, it used to be Sandy Bottoms, I don't know what it's called now, but they rent beach equipment and they sell food. And I don't know if that is going to be discontinued. And if it is discontinued, if there's a potential for that bathhouse being remodeled? Because I know there has been concern in the past about the size of the bath, bathhouse, and at times the cleanliness of the bathhouse. So though, that, just two things that I've thought of after sitting here and listening to all the comments. And I'm sure that you've considered some of these things, but I just wanted to bring those up. Thank you.
Mr. Mize, if you maybe could address those questions?
Well, I can address the, the DEQ issue. We've had some discussion with the Harrises about that, and there's actually been some discussion with the DEQ. And we know that that needs to continue. And it will really depend a lot on what development occurs on that site. But there has been that initial discussion already, and we anticipate that if a lease agreement or a development agreement is worked out, that it will be the responsibility of the Harrises to secure all the necessary permits to make that happen.
As far as the, the bathhouse, we do have a, a lease, and I don't anticipate that changing as long as the current vendor continues to approach. And if they don't, then we would put out for proposals like we have in the past. In fact, we just renewed that for the 2013 summer season. And I believe there's six or seven other vendors that are going to be working Pier Marquette this year. So there should be a lot more available this year than there have in years past. Personally, I think it will be telling to see how successful that is. You know, there's no proof like actually going out there and doing it and seeing if there's a market. The bathhouse really takes a beating. It gets heavily used. You know, I, I have talked with our park staff about it, and they can tell you stories about some of the things they've had to deal with. I mean, we tried to make it look really nice, and we ended up with basically the same kind of stuff you see in prison, and it still gets damaged. So, that's an ongoing concern, and we've heard that both last summer and this summer. And so certainly, we're aware of that. You know, if we can perhaps get some grant money or whatever we can do, but there's no short-term solution for that because we just don't have the money to go and just renovate that or, or build it. But it's certainly on our, our radar screen and our, our public works department radar screen. Just a minute, Commissioner. Go ahead, sir.
Mark Moller, 1786 Beach Street. Big fan of the Harrises. I know you'll be successful. You mentioned the volleyball courts. I was really, that's actually why I came. I wanted to, we've been playing volleyball on the beach since Kevin Davis and Stan Demmon were running the tournaments out of the mothership. And those courts are, people are going to say, well, there's a lot of courts, but those courts were the prime courts because they're sheltered. Volleyball is a very social game, and having six courts together is ideal for us. And so I guess I would challenge the city, not the Harrises, to do what they can to allow the six courts to be kind of in that area, but to open up more land if possible for the, maybe out front a little bit further. I think, it doesn't have to be the Harrises that have the courts, but it should be part of it. But I don't, I don't want to hold up. I mean, if we have to move forward as is, I guess I'm going to be fine. I'll sacrifice those courts to, to make this go forward. But those courts are important to us.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Ian Davis, 3290 Wilcox Avenue. I came, my sister and I had an opportunity to speak with the Harrises, or at least she did today. For those of you who don't know, my father was the late Kevin Davis, whom those courts are named after. Some of you know him from the city commission. And just kind of to reiterate the last point, we full-heartedly support development of the beach community, something the city needs, something the Bluffton neighborhood needs, but more importantly, the entire city. And I'd just like to point out that the Harris Group made the gesture today to reach out to us, to contact us, to ask, you know, our thoughts on the matter. And I'll, something like that does go a long way within the business. Like the gentleman's previous point, those are the ideal courts in West Michigan. Having spoken to some players in the community, arguably the best courts in all of West Michigan. But if that's the sacrifice we need to make for a better beach community, better business within the city, then so be it. And, you know, just like everyone else, we're pretty excited about this, and we appreciate the gesture from the Harris Group to, to seek our opinion in the matter. So, if that holds any weight here today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Commissioner Markowski, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just made a comment, but to some of the points that we've heard, the Harrises did mention that they were considering other options for those volleyball courts. And I was just curious if those options changed their proposed footprint? No purpose in deciding on a footprint if those volleyball courts were going to be under their purview and then change the footprint of that space? So, I don't know if they were able to comment on that. And the other one would be the parking, whether there have been adequate discussions on what their parking assumptions would be.
My name's Andrew Harris. I'm 3651 Windermere. I did talk with Emma today, and with that, you know, we told her nothing here is set in stone. We're just, you know, this is the, this is the addition of land we need, we need. You know, there's a lot of lower decked out here that we don't really anticipate using the lower level of the restaurant. So we're thinking that, you know, we could put a couple more rest, volleyball courts down there. Again, nothing's set in stone, but, you know, we're willing to work with the volleyball community to make sure that they're, they're just as happy as everybody else.
Sure. I, I would also point out, just so that we all realize, the volleyball courts are currently not operated by a, a private vendor. They're the city's courts and the, the league runs them. There's no reason they would have to be on this particular footprint in order for that to continue. So there's more flexibility there than I think might initially seem to be. And I don't want us to block ourselves in thinking they would have to be accommodated on this specific footprint if we chose to move forward with this request.
Right. But in that, they did say that, you know, it is protected by these rules, so it's, it's the wind blocks that, that really pieces us. So we're willing to work with them, you know, just as hard as anybody else.
Okay. Can you address the parking? Yeah. Manager, could you address your question regarding the parking, please?
Um, that's something we can, you know, work through the lease, you know, on, you know, that, that's something we really have to work with architects with and, you know, the, the city to come up with a fair plan.
One thing I, I would say about that is the gentleman mentioned the, the parking and the use of the facility, the, the beach and, and the various on-street parking and the parking lots. One thing that I guess I've noticed over the years is that there's another parking lot that is directly across the street from this facility that really does not get a lot of use. And we would anticipate that it would get a, a lot more use with the, with the banquet facility and the, and the restaurant. Now, albeit it, I think only has about 50 or so, maybe, maybe more, a little bit more than that parking spaces, but it adds to the number of spaces that are already there. And essentially, we're not available in the past.
Right.
So I think that will help alleviate some of the, some of the parking.
I'm just glad to hear we have a parking per, problem down at our beach. So, that's always a good...
That's always a good problem to have. Any other comments? Sir?
I wanted to say that my wife and I are Muskegon County residents, and we support this. It's a long time coming, we figure. We've been Muskegon residents for quite a while. And I had a concern from another person with the increased activity potentially down there. Is there consideration for security? So, people feel safe when they come down to all these activities? And that's just something to consider from everybody.
Absolutely. Well, let's leave it at that. I think we've been given a request, and we certainly, I think, if we choose, could entertain a motion to authorize the negotiation of an agreement based on an expanded footprint, which I would assume would have to come back to us for final approval. So, I will leave it to the commission to entertain that motion or not. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would enthusiastically support the proposal that the Harris Hospitality Group has presented, expand the footprint, and have our city manager and attorney work diligently for May 2014 opening.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner Hood to authorize city staff to negotiate with the Harris Group on the basis of an expanded footprint as described today. Obviously, the details will be in that final lease agreement that comes back to us. Any other discussion from the commissioners? Commissioner German?
I'd just like to commend Harris Hospitality on a well job done on your design and what you are presenting to the city. Something different, something new. I think it'll attract lots of people and get a lot of use out of that. But I really like the fact that you came back and you wasn't just pleased with the first design. You looked at it strategically and came back and said, hey, I think this would be a better fit. So, that lets me know that you put a lot of thought into what you're doing, and you want the best for this project as well as the city of Muskegon. So, I want to commend you on that.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's get this worked out and get going. And I think you hear everybody's excited, and thank you for the investment in the community. Commissioners, we have one other item under new business, a complete streets resolution, although I did not get a copy of that. Is there a draft of that?
Everybody should have had it. Okay, well, it's a resolution to support the concept of complete streets. It was prepared and sent out separate from the packet. It was an add-on, and you should have received it. I apologize if you didn't.
Well, I'll read it, but before we begin, could we have a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve a resolution.
Complete streets.
Pardon me. That we approve a resolution for complete streets.
Sir, support? It's been moved by Commissioner Markowski and seconded by Commissioner Hood to support a resolution supporting complete streets. Now, this is from a neighboring community, but I will read it, so we all are on the same page. Complete streets are defined as a design framework that enables safe and convenient access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and drivers of all ages and abilities. And whereas complete streets are achieved when communities routinely plan, design, construct, reconstruct, operate, and maintain the transportation network to improve travel conditions for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, automobiles, and freight in a manner consistent with and supportive of the surrounding community. And whereas development of pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure offers long-term cost savings and opportunities to create safe and convenient non-motorized travel. And whereas streets that support and invite multiple uses, including safe, active, and ample space for pedestrians, bicycles, and transit, are more conducive to the public life and efficient movement of people than streets designed primarily to move automobiles. And whereas increasing active transportation, e.g., walking, bicycling, and use of public transportation offers the potential for improved public health, economic development, a cleaner environment, reduced transportation costs, enhanced community connections, social equity, and more livable communities. And whereas the city, and this would be the city of Muskegon, recognizes the importance, okay, recognizes the benefits of street infrastructure with modifications such as sidewalks, crosswalks, shared use pathways, bicycle lanes, accessible curb ramps, pedestrian signals and signage, and public transportation stops to improve public health and offer a cleaner environment. And whereas the city of Muskegon has embraced and is supportive of enhanced pedestrian access to public infrastructure and continues to provide accessible ways of travel for the general public. Now, therefore be resolved that the City Commission of the city of Muskegon does hereby support complete streets objectives to provide safe and ample transportation options for the public. So, that's it in a nutshell. Basically, we're talking about sidewalks and walking paths and bike lanes and those kinds of things, issues that we've routinely supported throughout. So, I don't think this is new for us, but I do think it's certainly worthwhile to go on record that we're committed to following these kind of design standards. Any, we do have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions from the commission? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business before the commission from the commissioners? Commissioner Turnquist?
I'm just curious of what happened. The mayor appointed himself and Commissioner Hood and the city manager plus city staff to do something in regards to the conflict that we may have with Bike Time and Farmers' Market.
Well, perhaps Commissioner Hood or Manager Mize could give us a report?
I'd be happy to do that, if Commissioner doesn't mind. The people that Commissioner Turnquist mentioned did have a meeting with representatives of Bike Time, and I reported out to the commission this last week that I think we came to some terms on many items. There's some issues that I don't think that we necessarily have come to full agreement on, but that the representatives of the city would anticipate having a recommendation to the City Commission for your meeting on June 25th.
Do you feel there's some hope for a compromise?
Both parties, I would say that there was comments that were made that both parties needed to take some of the issues back to their respective groups and have further discussion.
Would you care to add anything, Commissioner Hood?
I think that there was, I have to agree with the city manager that we both, we met and passed some items out, and there was some give and take, and I think there's maybe one issue, one or two issues that still is not resolved, so.
Thank you. Any other items from the commission? Seeing none, this is the time for public comment. Everybody who submitted a request has already spoken. So, any member of the audience have an issue they wish to bring up to the City Commission? Ma'am?
My name is Martha Bottomley, and I live at 2337 Westwood in Muskegon. And I just wanted to bring before, basically, the television audience and the current commission that the Muskegon Association of Neighborhoods, or the Neighborhood Association of Muskegon, is hosting a forum for the candidates seeking the mayor's seat and the commission seats on July 10th at Muskegon High School. So, please put that on your calendar. We hope that all of the candidates show up and that we have a good turnout, so that we have an educated electorate.
What time of day was that?
7:00 PM.
So, that's July 10th at 7:00 PM.
At Muskegon High School in the big auditorium. And we do want to thank Muskegon school system for supplying the facilities, and they're being very, very cooperative.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
That's my name, Bob Thomas, 261 West Larch. I've been here before and tried to, it didn't matter. Took care of, but didn't have it, I took care of. So, I got some papers there. I'd like to pass it off, so you can have a clear view of what was going on.
Thomas, in the future, when you leave messages on my machine, you got to leave a full phone number. I only got about half a phone number from you. Yeah, and I didn't call you back because I didn't have a phone number.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Everything that you see on this first page has been for water that's been shut off there, but it's been added on to my bill. I only owed $191. If you turn to the third page, where you see the writing at, you can see where it said waterman turned up. 4/13/2009. I owe $181, but yet, they still been adding on to my water bill. And if you turn back to the second page, the meter, the waterman came to 8/2013. It was not shut all the way off out there in the street. But yet, it was leaking, you know, coming into my house. Just give me a minute here, sorry. Okay, my dear, if you may, pass this around and read this, I got this. I don't see I can go from $181 to almost $2,000 that's been over there on my taxes.
Mr. Thomas, when you came and spoke to us before, we advised you, and you had counsel at the time, that you needed to meet with city staff to resolve these issues.
I tried that, sir.
Well, the meeting was scheduled, and perhaps the manager could tell us?
No, no, hold on, excuse me, sir. I'm not trying to cut you off, but Brian can't help me.
Mr. Thomas, this is the commission's meeting, and we're asking the staff to report on your previous request to meet with staff before we proceed. So, Brian, if you would?
What happened was the, Mr. Thomas came before the City Commission in March, and City Commission listened to Mr. Thomas regarding his water issue and directed him to have his city, or his attorney meet with myself and our staff. His attorney called and scheduled a meeting, and then his attorney called back later and said that he was no longer representing Mr. Thomas, that another attorney was representing Mr. Thomas. We held that time available. Nobody came, nobody called, and we've not had any contact from Mr. Thomas's attorneys since that time. What we understand is that Mr. Thomas has made some payment arrangements with the county treasurer's office, because what he has shown you is leans against his property that have been placed there as a result of not paying the water bill. And apparently, he's made a payment arrangement with the county treasurer's office. And that is the extent of what I know about this situation.
No, this is what it is. Brian can't help me in no way, shape, or form. You know, I done tried to talk to him with the, I told him, I don't need no attorneys, a baby can understand this right here. When my water got cut off 2009, you can't keep charging me water when the water been shut off.
Well, I would suggest that you follow through on what you were asked to do the last time.
I tried that, though. It didn't work.
Well, it didn't work because you didn't follow through.
I followed through.
Well, here's your opportunity to follow through and actually meet with your attorney and city staff.
I don't have no attorney. I'm doing this by myself now.
Then you can meet directly with city staff on this issue.
Who is the city staff?
Mr. Mize.
Who, him right there?
Yes.
He can't help me. He don't want to help me. When we get behind closed doors, he don't, he don't want to help me. He gonna say the same thing.
No one here can guarantee you're going to get the solution that you want.
Is my waterman cut off since, oh, 2009?
No one can promise you that. But we have to rely on our staff to give us a report on the facts of the matter. We've heard what you have to say. It's substantially the same as what you reported the last time you were here. What we have to do is we have to rely on our staff to meet with you, review those facts, see if some relief can be done, and report back to us on what form that may take, if any. So, what we can do for you is what we told you to do last time, is meet with city staff, which is the city manager, bring your facts for him.
It didn't work.
Well, you didn't actually meet with them, did you?
I called up here and his secretary, no, to talk to him. He didn't want to talk to me.
I'm not going to get in.
You ain't even let me finish talking. You just cut me off right away saying.
Mr. Thomas, this is not a debate. This is not a trial. This is not a board of appeal.
It's the truth, though.
And what you have been told, and what I'm telling you again, is you have to meet with city staff. You didn't meet with city staff the last time.
He didn't want to meet with me. I called up here to meet with him. His secretary said he didn't want to talk to me.
He will meet with you if you call and make an appointment. You have our assurance on that.
Ryan ain't trying to help me, man. I'm telling you the truth right now.
Wait, wait, wait. We're done with this. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Hood. You have the option of contacting the city manager and meeting with him or not. That is your choice.
I'm coming to meet with you tomorrow, then.
That is your choice. Call and make an appointment. Okay, Commissioner Hood?
Okay, I got a question, and I also would, you know, recommend that you try to go through that procedure again and see what happens. I mean, that's the procedure you have to take, so let's try that again. My question is, you said that your water was cut off, but it wasn't all the way cut out in the street?
The man that came, Bob, he said it wasn't. It's the thing in the street strip. So, that's why you see them pictures where the water was still leaking coming in the house, and the meter still was running. I just moved back there 2013 to January.
So, it's the meter, it was the connection in the street and not at the home?
Yes, it's out there in the street.
I have a question also.
Sure.
Just to piggyback off what Commissioner Hood said, Mr. Thomas, yeah, there's definitely a protocol that you have to take.
Yes.
As stated by Commissioner Hood, I recommend that you do follow that protocol. I'm looking at these statements. Now, these are statements with current causes each month. Were you occupying that property at that time?
No, sir.
Okay, so there was no use of water, that's what you're saying, to your knowledge, but it indicates that the water was shut off?
Yes.
And cost kept occurring?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, with your fact to meeting with the city manager, the last meeting, are you saying that you don't feel comfortable meeting with the manager?
No, because every time...
Would you like one of the commissioners or someone to sit in if that's a problem to maintain some type of mediation?
Yes.
Okay. Would that be a problem?
I guess that's up to the city commission if they want to direct that. I think I'm comfortable with that. I don't think that's the regular protocol, but I'm comfortable with that. I, the other thing I would say is I think that the city staff, and it's not just myself, but there's been others that have been involved, and this has been very forthcoming and very forthright with Mr. Thomas. We've spent a lot of time. Mr. Thomas has alleged to you that myself and perhaps other staff members are unwilling to meet with him. That's not the case. I've met with him on two occasions. Our staff have made appointments for him to meet with me. Mr. Thomas has showed up on our doorstep to meet with me, and there has been at least one occasion that I was not able to meet with him. Otherwise, we've scheduled appointments. I, in fact, asked our staff to initiate the appointment with Mr. Thomas the last time. So, to suggest that myself or other staff members are unwilling to meet with him...
If you can help me, why am I here now? Why am I here if you can help me, Brian?
The fact of the matter is that you have not, Mr. Thomas, you've not heard the answer you want to hear.
Right. So, let, this is where we're going to leave this. You're welcome to contact city staff, meaning the city manager, during business hours tomorrow and make an appointment. Heard the manager say he's willing, and if Commissioner German is willing to step up and be willing to be there in that meeting so you feel more comfortable. You've heard that there is a willingness to do that, and proceed from there. Understand, as with any billing statement with anybody, there's no guarantee you're going to get the result you want. But we have to make sure that we're following our rules, our regulations that we're required to follow with any water customer. We have thousands and thousands and thousands of water customers, both within the city of Muskegon and in the surrounding areas, and we have to be fair to those customers, and we have to treat everybody using the same standards, and that's what we will do with you.
I appreciate that, sir. That's all I'm asking for, fairness.
And that's what you'll get. So, contact the manager's office tomorrow.
You got that in.
Is there any well and a else from the audience who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, Commissioner Hood, is there a motion?
There's nothing else. I motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by Commissioner German that we adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.